Absent are Herman Lilia and Terry Duffy. So we will proceed with the meeting. The first item of business is the public discussion. Is there any public discussion tonight? Toby?
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. I see the third item on the agenda. Old Business Planning Board Recommendations Concerning Easement on Town Property at 54 Marmion Way. You discussed this the last time, and it was also discussed at the Finance Committee, where I harangued them about the unfortunate fact that the selectmen have been giving away these easements for a dollar, more or less in perpetuity, although they say they can be revoked. I'm not so sure. Anyway, something was accomplished there, and the Finance Committee agreed that they would recommend to the selectmen, they can only recommend, as you can only recommend, that the town get $250. But that was a figure out of thin air, not arrived at by any formula. I suggested a formula and was ignored. I think the whole process needs to be looked at more closely. This was changed at a town meeting. It was passed narrowly at the behest of the selectmen. And you're doing your part to determine, but you know, how are you to know what the DPW commissioners might need, you know, in one of these areas subject to an easement? The Finance Committee didn't know. Mitch Vieira, who was there, told them that it was all okay. That's rather different from having it formally reviewed by the DPW commissioners and a written sign-off, which certainly ought to be part of the process. And it's beyond your scope as the planning board. You're asked narrowly to recommend for or against, but we're all citizens and would like to see, you know, the town's interests defended. So my hope would be you would suggest to the selectmen that they get together with your board and the Finance Committee and the DPW commissioners and consider redoing, you know, the process for granting these so-called de minimis easements.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Zee, you would like to comment? Just for the record, member Terry Duffy has arrived. So we have four planning board members tonight.
Yeah. Zee Supple, 92 Granite Street. The last two planning board meetings, I've commented on your procedures and specifically some faults I found with your public hearing descriptions. I went on the computer and just Googled "public hearing requirements" and came up with a document from Washington State, which was prepared by some outfit called MRSC. I'm going to give you folks a copy of it. And it delineates differences between legislative public hearings and quasi-judicial public hearings. And the reason that I thought that was kind of interesting was because at the last meeting, Jason, you said that you had gone to one of these State House hearings, which I presume was a legislative hearing, and had been seen that they had allowed a time limit of three minutes for each person and one comment period per person, which you then, I believe, transmitted to your types of hearings. So I just want to give you these documents. Interestingly, as you go through and look through towns and things like that and how they conduct business, you look through the town of Brewster down on Cape Cod. Their public comment, they won't even allow town officials to comment back in response to public comments, because they feel any deliberation without it being announced could be a violation of the open meeting law. So I won't ask you to comment on this, but I'll give you the papers and you can read it, and maybe next time we round, you can maybe offer some remarks on them.
Okay, just for the record, we note that I'm being handed a printout. Thank you, Zee, for this, on the topic of public hearings. Okay, is there any other public comment? There being no public comment, I turn everyone's attention to the minutes for September 19th of 2019. And I don't know if everyone's reviewed them, but if they have, could you, are there any corrections, additions, deletions that any other members have to those minutes? There being none, is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 19th, 2019?
So moved.
Motion made by member Betts, second to the motion. Motion seconded by member Duffy. All in favor?
Aye.
I, all opposed. No opposition to that motion. The next item of business is going to be the old business, and this is the Planning Board Recommendation for the easement on 54 Marmion Way. I think everyone's got a copy of that. I did get some comments back. I did, Tom, I did make the changes that you had, typographical areas that you'd suggested. I also, after talking with Herm, I deleted the, I changed the provision that said that specifically, it said the, that the planning, several, I said several members of the board questioned whether the town should ever grant an easement to private property, and then the sentence after that was, "All planning board members were concerned about the town unconditionally ceding its property rights to a private individual." And after talking with Herm and getting his feedback, I changed that to "most planning board members," so it's not necessarily unanimous. But other than that, the letter, the draft letter, because it is really a draft, I, you know, accept any comments on it, is a draft, but it essentially reflects what I think is the consensus of the board, which is that an easement would be acceptable if it is part of the easement that the town continues to have a right to disturb any wall that's constructed on the easement, if necessary for things like power line undergrounding or improvements to Marmion Way or repairs to Marmion Way, that those are, you know, in the purview of our, what we're supposed to be looking at is, which is long-range planning, we're looking at a possibility, you know, Marmion Way is a road that on occasion can be subjected to, you know, sea water intrusion, and I think that's why this wall is, is it going to be built in the first place, is to prevent that. So it just allows the town some flexibility if something needs to be done in the area of the easement, and that's what the, that's what it would be. So, that being said, I'm assuming everyone's read the draft. If everyone agrees, or at least the majority of the members agree with it, then, you know, it will constitute the recommendation of the board to the town.
I guess I'd like to, I am happy with this letter and recommendation. I think my, my, beyond this, though, I think there is, there is a question of just using Rockport's land for their use, and somehow we should, we really do need to understand why someone can do this without, they're simply, they're, in a way, enlarging their property at no expense. And somehow that discussion ought to take place, I think, and we ought have a, we're doing these things so far because we're nice to each other, we're nice neighbors and so forth, but when we make rulings ourselves, I mean, we had a house torn down because they didn't do side setbacks right, right? And we say, but on something like this, where we're encroaching on town property, we, it might be worth our while to, well, it's not our business, it's the selectmen's business, it would be worth asking them some questions beyond this, which is outside of this letter, but beyond that.
Well, that, you know, Hank, on that point, you know, I am, I am going to be going to the meeting of the selectmen, and I could, could bring up this concern, I guess, is what.
I guess, would you do that in a public hearing, or would you?
Well, it would be one of the things, you know, when I report to them, tell them what we're doing.
From us, oh, okay, right.
Say, hey, this is what we're doing, and, you know.
Right.
Yeah, that's the.
Yeah, because it looks, it looks.
Yeah, that'll be October 8th.
Yeah, it looks fine, but when I parked my car on my driveway that doesn't exist on my property once, I got a, and it was, it was, my, my, going up my, wasn't my driveway, but I own property behind the house, you know, I got a parking ticket because I'm on public land, which is okay, but, you know, one could say, well, you see, I shouldn't have had to get a parking ticket there, although I was on property. Anyway, so I'm just, we need to be consistent.
Anybody else have anything? Nobody? All right, so what I'll ask for then is.
Nice letter.
Thank you. Is a motion to allow me to allow this letter, dated October 3, 2019, to be put in final form and sent to Mitchell Vieira as the recommendation of the planning board regarding the proposed easement at 54 Marmion Way. So I'll need a motion to approve of that.
I have one question. Who determines the amount to be paid for the easement? Is it the Finance Committee or Mitch?
I think it's going to be the Board of Selectmen that's going to ultimately.
But there's no formula. There's no, there's no nothing. That's, I think that's the.
Well, there is none.
We don't have, and that's, that's what I'm, we have no way. We say, well, it's okay, because you're a nice guy, and you know, I know what you're doing.
Well, it's not our job, but I'd like to know whose job it is.
Exactly. Well, that's what, that's what I meant was, that's, we need to have a chairman ask those questions to the selectmen.
Yeah.
And say, it's just not okay to just say it's, I'll take some Rockport land.
Okay.
That's all.
Good.
All right, well, anyway, there's a, there's a motion pending.
I second.
No, I'm sorry, did someone make the motion?
No.
No, there is no motion, so I'm asking for someone to make a motion.
I move that we accept the letter to Mr. Vieira concerning the property easement on 54 Marmion Way.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Betts to accept this letter as the recommendation of the planning board. Any second of the motion?
Second.
Second of the motion?
Do we amend to request information on who will decide on the amount of easement?
Well.
Is that too much for?
Well, that's kind of beyond the motion. That's, that's not really our purview.
Yeah.
But that's something to be brought up, and I will be, I will bring it up.
We'll bring it up, I'm in favor.
Okay. So there's a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
I, opposed. Motion carried.
We'll hold that, we'll hold that chairman accountable to talking to this.
All right. All right, next item of business is the, it's actually new business, although, because technically it's a new plan, but it's old business. This was the Deborah Hool A&R. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at that.
I didn't yet.
Okay, well, you can take a look at it, Terry. Basically, it shows, I think it was you that brought up the, the lack of depiction of the easement on the plan, and so this is the revised plan. We told the applicant that, the surveyor, that he didn't need to be here tonight, because this was supposed to be kind of a slam dunk thing, and anyway, so he's not here. So we've discussed it last time. I think everyone's familiar with it. Does anybody have any more to add about this A&R?
Well, I looked at the drawing, and I see a dash line where the easement should be, but I don't see any text that says this is an easement. Is that understood by the dash line?
I think that that would be an indication of, yes, an easement.
Okay.
All right, so.
I agree with you, but.
I have to say, it's, it's, I've seen a lot of survey maps, and I'm sure you have too. This is kind of unusual, the way he's just, the way he's done it. It's, it's a different way of doing maps, let's say that.
Can we just write in, "Easement coming"?
So, you know, the, the thing is, this is such a de minimis conveyance. It's a really small amount, so it really doesn't have, it isn't that critical. But anyway, does anybody have a, I'm asking for a motion then to approve the A&R, the re-submitted A&R by Deborah Hool at the Independent Way, which was submitted on September 26, 2019.
I move to approve this new submission of the A&R with the understanding that the dash line is an easement.
Okay.
That'll, that'll put it in our minutes.
All right. Anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Motion seconded, any discussion? Okay, so the motion was made by Tom, seconded by Terry. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, I ask for a vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
I, opposed. Motion carried, four, zero. The A&R is approved, and don't forget, we all have to sign it, both the Mylar and the other copies when we're, when we're done here. Okay.
Can I just make another comment about this proceeding is, you know, we have a checklist working for the site plan review?
Yes.
I wonder if we should now have a checklist for the A&Rs of information such as that?
Okay, that's, that's an excellent, no, that's an excellent idea.
It's to complete it. They're supposed to be so simple, but here.
You know, they've given us more trouble than pretty much anything, A&Rs.
Yeah.
So who, who wants to take a stab at that?
Yeah, I suppose I can do that.
Okay.
It'll be a while, but.
Terry to take a stab. Maybe when things are quieter for you and the.
I've got about another month.
Another month, okay. That's a good, that's an excellent idea, though. Something that we can just go down and.
Yeah, because that, it should have been, any easements that exist on any of the properties should have been on there already.
Yeah, I agree with you. Okay, member items. This is, I have something to talk about, but I, yeah, I don't know if there's a member item or administration, I don't think it really matters, but you all have the, because this is, this isn't really us, it's, it's actually the building inspector and the, then the, you know, the bylaw regarding the setbacks for houses of a certain size. And as you know, Herm, who unfortunately is not here tonight, but understandably so, raised a question about the 51, specifically about 51 Marmion Way, but really more in general about the application of the setback requirements and limitations of subsection 11(c) of the, actually, section, section 4A 11(c) of the zoning bylaws, which, you know, you're all probably familiar with. And what I've, what I've handed out to everybody is my email after the last meeting to Mitch for an opinion from council, and then Amy's, our town council's opinion, which really kind of focused on the definition of gross floor area, meaning the building under consideration. And then my follow-up email to her, saying, well, how does this affect where you, the situation where you've got two buildings? One is the residence, and the second one is an accessory building. Basically, do you aggregate the two gross floor areas to come up with the amount of gross floor area and hence the amount of the setback that's required? Because our building inspector has taken the position that you don't, that basically you just look at the gross floor area of the residence, and, you know, he has some rationale for that, and that's apparently the position he took with 51 Marmion Way. However, you know, Amy Quissel's opinion, and this is the last page, is of the member, of the email exchange, says that, no, you, the way this thing is written, you should look at both the gross floor area of the residence and any accessory buildings, which of course, if you put them together, that could put you over the 4,000 square feet of gross floor area and therefore increase the setbacks. So this is, this is different from the way the building inspector has been applying it. However, that's, you know, we're not an enforcement agency. We don't tell the building inspector what to do. And she does say, and this is what I think is the really important thing, because we've talked about this, is in the last sentence, obviously, this is a confusing provision that may need clarification in an upcoming town meeting, essentially inviting this board to maybe take a look at this section and rewrite it, and I think we've talked about that a little bit in the past. So, yeah.
Where do you, where am I reading?
You're at the last page.
Yeah.
The last sentence on the, her email at the time.
Oh.
Hi, Mitch, and then she goes on to say that. Because the way, the way it's written now, it seems to me that if you have an existing residence, and then you, someone wants to build an accessory structure, that the way it's written now, you don't look at the square footage of the existing residence, you just look at the square footage of the accessory structure. But if you have a new residence and a new accessory structure, you have to look at the square footage of both of them. And I don't know if that's really what was intended.
No, it's not.
So I, we may want to go back to the beginning on this and kind of relook at this and figure out, and, you know, again, Herm's not here. I know he was pretty heavily involved in this, so.
We all were involved with it.
Yeah.
I mean, when you said specifically Herm, that's incorrect.
Okay. Well, he was the most, he was the most vocal at the last meeting.
Well, that's because the rest of us, at least I was speechless.
Speechless, yeah, okay.
But I, I think, I can see the question that you had, that he had on this 3,000 square foot, but does it have to be 15 feet between a garage and a dwelling?
I think he's talking, yeah, well, that's what Paul said.
You have, if you have a, a separate garage, you have to have 15 feet.
Residence and a separate structure, you've got to have a minimum of 15 feet of setback, is what he said.
So in this case, they could go and get, try and get a variance.
Yeah, this is, this.
With someone to give them.
This setback that we're talking about here, Hank, though, is the, is the setback.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Bit from the line, not, not between the.
Yeah, I know, I got that.
Okay, good, I didn't know if you knew that.
Yeah.
So.
He used the example of 3,000 square foot house on a, on a half acre lot. You know, my, my answer to that is, you're building too big a house on a half acre lot.
And that was the intention of our.
And that's the intent of it.
Okay.
We have, this board has talked many times about the definition of gross floor area, and we've just let the ball drop, but you can see that that definition that's provided is not what we want.
Yeah, I think it needs to be.
We also need to look at, because gross floor area is also used in another section with a different, a different definition, so we need to come up with some other term.
But what other section is that, Terry?
I forget it off the top of my head, but I remember we've talked about this several times.
The 7,000 square foot limit?
Yeah, maybe that's where it is.
Right, well, there's that kind of limit. It says if you're under two acres, two acres are under.
And that's on the next.
Yeah, you, you can't, gross floor area, seven, and then it talks about what you exclude, but apparently that isn't being applied to the other definitions of gross floor areas, so it's.
That's my point. You make two different areas.
But you know, it's, it's interesting, when we did site plan review, if someone had a 5,500 square foot home and so forth, and then added 1,000 square feet to it.
As an addition.
That kicked in, it's like planned review. And what we're saying, what, going back, what they said here, well, if you, so Amy's saying, so if you've got a 5,000 square foot house and the garage, that you just look at the garage separately, which is completely different than what we do do with a site plan review.
That's the way I read what she's saying.
The reasoning is.
Okay, well, you know, here's the deal. I don't think it's, I don't think for us to sit here and try to, you know, interpret what, how this thing is written is necessarily productive, because it is confusing and there are inconsistencies. I think this is a perfect example of this board taking this and saying, okay, let's rework it to reflect what we mean. And then, you know, there are no ambiguities, that it's clear, and then we go to the town meeting with this before the, before the voters. So I would recommend that. I don't know if anybody on, any other board members want to take this on. Maybe we can wait till Herm's here next time and, you know, include him in that too, but I don't think there's any question it needs to be rewritten. It's just a matter of rewriting.
In the meantime, though, this 51 Marmion Way thing is, that's not, that's not the case where it's on some small lot and there's some kind of hardship for this guy to put his garage where it belongs. And right now, as I understand it, there's no, he can keep building his garage where, where he wants, within the site setback, and that's not correct now.
Well, she says that on the last page.
Yeah. Somehow, he needs to, we need to take action on that, or he'll put that garage up and, and it shouldn't.
Well, I, you know, Hank, here's the problem, is that we don't, we can't take action on that.
Do we have a jurisdiction on that?
The building inspector can take action on that, and it's the building inspector who has interpreted this section as meaning that it only applies to.
I know that.
Your understanding.
Why, why can't we, through council, sue, if you will, the building inspector?
I don't think we can, as a planning board? Because we don't have any standing to sue the building inspector.
Why can't the neighbors sue?
Well, the neighbors, the neighbors could. The neighbors could, sure, but I don't know where they are on that.
They're pretty upset. I can't, because they were upset with when that, when, when, before, when they tried to separate that lot, it was pretty heated, at least in the neighborhood, that this is not, wasn't right. And that's how they actually ended up, I think, selling the thing and tearing the building that was there down. So somehow, it doesn't seem right that we're going to leave and say, well, nothing, nothing can happen because the building inspector said something that's, in my view and in our legal counsel's view, incorrect, and that it's okay. I just, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable to leave it that way.
We're not, we're not even saying it's okay. We're saying it's outside of our jurisdiction.
I understand that.
We have to find some other mechanism to make this happen.
Right.
So it was stated when Ruth was here, you know, that, that this is something that we thought was wrong, and that we were, you know, she was going to get reported to. So whether Mitch hands this to her or during your meeting with them and you.
Yeah, I'll bring it up. Yeah, I'll bring it up.
Bring it up?
Definitely bring it up.
As, as.
Yeah.
Our, our little box that we're in doesn't allow this body to interfere with that.
Right, but it should.
Be brought up, absolutely.
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
So Herman, as far as I'm concerned, we've done everything we legally can do. Herman brought it up, you know, Jason followed up with Amy, which is, you know, what we should do, and now here we are. Now we have to give this information to.
Right.
To the proper authority, kind of thing.
Because it would be, it would seem to me that if I go to the Board of Selectmen on the eighth, which I'm going to do, and say, listen, this is a concern, we got legal council's opinion on it. It's supported, you know, what the position was of this board on this particular section. We know that it has to be, you know, it should be redone, but the fact is that a permit was given to this property owner for this structure, which is inconsistent with this provision. And, you know, this is, it's up to the town to enforce its laws.
Right.
And not up to us, you know, so.
And it was, I mean, that was the intent that was sold at town meeting.
Right. Yeah.
And so therefore the town really wants this, it's not just us.
Right.
So, when you, when this came up before, at the town meeting and was voted on, the idea was, at least it was discussed and everyone believed that this section would prevent, you know, if you've got four thousand square feet as a standard, let's say, that if you have between the house and the garage, you're over four thousand, then you've got to meet the lot line setbacks that are instead of ten feet, twenty feet.
Correct.
Okay, there we go, all right.
And, and, so anyway, but this letter, I think you need to change this letter. Just what I'm saying, it's not just specifically Herm.
Well, that doesn't matter.
No, okay, but, whatever.
That really doesn't matter.
And Paul, Paul, Paul's making this point of, where someone wants to, this three thousand square foot, again, that's, yeah, no kidding, we're trying to, that's why we're doing it. I just don't.
Well, I, I wanted to get his, I wanted to get Paul's opinion, you know, before coming like gangbusters on this. I wanted to see what he thought, why he was doing what he was doing, and we did, and then throw it at legal counsel.
Yeah, see, we've done this, we've had this, yeah, I agree. And I'm done with talking about this one, you know, this has happened, this, we might have this thing on anywhere where, where someone, the building inspector might not agree with, like lighting, exterior lighting. I don't think he agrees with our bylaw very much.
Well, that shouldn't matter.
But it's how he, if he interprets it a different way, that's not good either, so. And we, I don't know whether we have cases or, not cases, but situations where, where we're allowed to do something that we said we don't want to have anymore.
Well, you know, what happens, what happens with these things is that sometimes, yeah, okay, town council reviewed it and the attorney general reviewed it, but they're not reviewing it and looking at it as closely as we would like. I mean, they're just saying, okay, does it look on its face, is it okay? So this is, you know, this is an issue that has to be addressed. It'll be brought up to the Board of Selectmen and we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
See, it would be good if, if, when we do these things, it would be good if we said, you know what, building inspector, you need to come to our meeting when we're discussing this stuff.
He did, he actually did come to one of the lighting meetings, I think the lighting hearing, and he opposed it because he didn't know.
How to enforce it.
He was opposed to the enforcement.
Yeah.
How was he going to enforce it?
Yeah.
I remember him being here, though.
Well, I'll tell you one thing, if, you know, if this thing gets reworked and we, and we have a public hearing on it here, he will definitely be someone we'll want to have here at that public hearing.
Yeah, and I think he would come.
I think he would too.
Yeah.
Because he's, you know, I think he would, so. The only other thing I have was the, just to report to you back on the, our search for a planner. We had two things. First of all, Hank did contact me earlier this week. He had a resume from a woman who's a resident of Rockport, is that right?
Gloucester.
Gloucester, who had some planning experience in her background. She's done a lot of other things too. So, we're gonna talk, meet with her and just, you know, just to see, feel her out a little bit. I don't think it's at a point now where, you know, the whole board, it may get there, it may not, you know. So why, why waste everyone's time? And let's, you know, maybe we'll talk with her next week and see what, report back to the board and then see what everyone wants to do with her. The other thing is, I did talk to, talk with Mitch today and he did, he did say that three separate ads are going to be running this month, both in the, you know, the GDT and Salem newspaper, which I don't know how valuable those are, but also in the American, the Massachusetts, the American Planning Association Massachusetts chapter and also another municipal entity for this position. So we'll, we'll see what happens there. I did mention, I think I mentioned this to the board, that Kirk did say he'd be available on a project specific basis to assist this board. We're fortunate in that we haven't gotten anything in the last couple of months that we really needed a planner for, so. But he is available, so it's moving really slowly, but I think it's moving.
Yeah.
So, that's all I have to say.
Just one follow-up from that. When we, when you do have a planner, they're able to work better to create the sort of thing that Tom sent that article about. Was it yesterday or today or something?
Yeah, the one in the GDT.
The what?
Forty R overlay district.
Oh, that's Manchester's got, yeah, it's in the paper today too.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah, exactly.
You should get a copy of that. You know, the, not the paper, I mean, the actual, yeah.
I don't think they've completely.
They're not there yet?
They're saying they want an overlay and they're working on it.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody has anything else?
Two things. One, belatedly, I saw a typo in the minutes we approved.
Okay, where is that?
On the last page in Mr. Arsenian's comments. It says Thursday, September twentieth, it's actually twenty-sixth.
Okay, well, can we just make that change? Which page is this?
Page four, last page.
Page four?
I think that's the last page, yes. On the public discussion, last line of the first paragraph.
Okay.
Thursday, September.
Here it is, right here. Last line of the first paragraph?
Under item eight, public discussion.
Oh, under public discussion, yeah. Last line, it's Thursday, September twenty.
Twenty-sixth.
Six, okay.
So that's.
Good catch.
That's my late item.
All right.
The other is, sorry, I wasn't at the event that I was promoting that happened last week, but Hank and Herm, I think, attended.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you want to have any comment about that or wait till Herm gets here, but there's a follow-up meeting coming in October, October twenty-third. It was pretty good attendance, I hear.
If you guys want to talk about it now, go ahead.
I got a little bit of feedback. Joe Parisi said he met with somebody from the Marine Center and that they would work together on a grant to do some work. I think one of our finance committee members said they might want to coordinate with Gloucester on some, some work and work together on things. But that won't really get firmed up until the follow-up meeting when people come together and say, yeah, let's really work together.
Yeah, I think the value of that meeting was, was this discussion on, if the ocean rises, how do we block it? The other stuff, I'm not sure. I was happy about that, but I mean, the rest of it is, for me, was not valuable, for me personally.
Well, some people got different things out of it.
I understand, yeah.
And anyone else who wants to go to the follow-up meeting is welcome.
Yeah.
Anything else from the board? Okay, I did get an email today, I'll, I'll send it to everybody. It just got, came in this afternoon from Chris Kushel. It was kind of.
Remember him?
Yeah. It was a, I didn't even read it, I didn't have time to read it, but it was basically asking us what we're doing and he's hoping we're doing something and I'll pass it on to everybody for the next meeting to take a look at.
Okay.
All right, public discussion. Toby.
Toby Arsenian, ninety-five Granite Street. Your reasonable concern to get a planner and the money appropriated at town meeting, you know, to pay for a planner and no planner, and no planner, and no planner. And meanwhile, the Board of Selectmen at the last meeting raised the possibility that they would go out and contract with other towns jointly to get a human resources officer on a part-time basis, just as you were hoping with Gloucester and later with other communities to get a planner. So, there was no appropriation at the town meeting for, you know, such an eventuality or such a need. So, you know, not as a planning board, but as citizens, I think you ought to be concerned. Nothing was said about where they would come up with the money. And, you know, it is a legitimate concern. You know, all of this was sold to the town meeting, a town administrator with a price tag of a hundred and forty thousand dollars and two other new appointments, stipend positions for a finance director, that's Carrie Arnold, and a emergency services director, that's Mark Schmink. And, you know, those presented as being a bargain because we weren't going to have a, an assistant town administrator. So apparently the Board of Selectmen feel that, you know, for things that they feel are important and damn the town meeting and public control, you know, money should be available. So, I, I just wish to throw gas on the flames.
Zee?
Yeah, Zee Supple, ninety-two Granite Street. I don't know if any of you have seen the last selectman's meeting, but at the end of public comment, Toby brought up a fact about some, a pile of contaminated fill at the five Granite Street site of the old greenhouse. And he asked if anybody was planning on doing anything to expedite its removal. In response to that, the selectmen chastised Toby to coming to them, which I found incredible, as the top executives of this town, telling a citizen that he should go down lower and try to find out who is responsible to remove that. At any rate, there is a pile there and I looked in the town bylaws and the only thing that it says about soil removal or topsoil removal is taking it out of town. And the person, the people that are responsible for the enforcement of that provision of the bylaw are the selectmen. So, the question I have is, it said that they needed the recommendation of the planning board and I believe the Conservation Commission on what to do with that. And I don't recall, but I was wondering if like during the course of the site plan, whether or not there was a permit that came to you folks for a recommendation. And if you can't remember it or don't remember it, maybe you could just.
I'm not aware of anyone.
For removal of.
Removal of fill in Granite Street?
Hold it, we haven't done a site plan review for that.
It was his own CBA.
No, I don't think we had, I don't recall.
There was a CBA process because of the forty B.
So, right now at least, the consensus would be that there's never been anything that's come before you for, for a recommendation.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more public discussion? There being none, anyone have a motion to adjourn?
No bills or anything, I guess.
Uh, no bills today, but we just have to sign that A and R after the meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made by Tom.
Seconded.
Seconded by Hank. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion adjourned.